I think that's probably about five till. Alright, have twenty-five. You can get started. How long is your piece?
Six minutes.
Six? Why don't you go ahead and start now then?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you two can sit down. Alright, performance number one.
Oh. It's from the movie The Sting. You guys ever see it?
No.
No.
Right?
What?
It's from the movie The Sting.
Yeah. I'll nod my head and say, oh, yeah, sure.
It is.
Excellent movie.
Robert Redford, Paul Newman.
It's a classic.
It is. Awesome, guys. So, they asked a question. So, I couldn't see you guys so much, but you, you guys don't play in unison?
We do not. We play off these. So, I'll play one beat, he plays the next.
Ah, I can see where your fingers are going. Nice job.
Thank you.
It'll be great.
We're trying to maybe get to sleep.
Awesome. And the competition's here in a couple weeks.
Yes.
You're all asleep, huh?
On the seventh.
Seven.
I could say more about that, or should I say during the, during the meeting, once we get rolling?
I'm not the boss.
We have another one, right?
Yeah.
I just needed to move this, I couldn't see.
Let's start the meeting and then you can. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order verify the comments of the meetings on occasion, not the agenda. We can all please stand in front of the flag. By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have no comments, so we'll move on to four for the Student Spotlight Solo and Ensemble Festival. Mr. Zens, if you'd like to come up and, just go ahead and go to the microphone and introduce the groups.
Hello, I'm Michael Zens, a music teacher in the district. Thanks for inviting the students to play. These students, they're all preparing for the Solo and Ensemble Festival, which we are going to be hosting at Whittnall High School on Saturday, March 7th. The first group that played before the meeting, this is, you're calling yourselves the Teq Quartet, is that right? The T-E-Q, Tubal Euphonium Quartet. And this consisted of, from the, from the players right to their left, Sam Henkel and John Lenz on euphonium, and Eli Vandermullen and Colby Pinkerton on the tuba. Up next, we're going to hear a marimba duet from, oh, and also, Sam is a senior, John is a junior, Eli is a sophomore, and Colby is a senior. And in a minute here, we're going to hear a mallet duet from Ryan Dudak and Joey Radke. They're both 12th graders, and both of these events are going to be among the close to 700 events that we have here between Whittnall schools, both New Berlin schools, and a handful of other schools that are sending a few events. But Whittnall and the two New Berlins are, are the big ones that we're going to be hosting. So, a lot going on, it'd be, it'll be throughout that entire day on the 7th, so if you want to stop by and hear some great music, it'll be all over the halls of Whittnall High School. Okay, you guys are up.
So, Ryan, you play fast and he plays slow.
Yeah.
And he's got, he's got three mallets and you only got two.
True.
How do you do it to two, man? That's cra- that's crazy.
Uh, when I was a sophomore, we did a trio, me, him, and somebody who was a grade above us, and I had four mallets.
All on the same one? All three of you?
No, there's two of us on one, and one of us on the other.
That was a story. Solo and Ensemble, these guys played at Franklin High School that year, and I thought that you each had your own.
I, well, we, we were supposed to, and then stayed, we had to play on the same. Because they only had the five octave, and then his harp sounded like super low, and it was just...
So, at Franklin, they had two, no, they had one marimba, so I had to bring two of our marimbas over, and these things are pretty big. So, then I had the, um, the milk truck, like the lunch truck, and I'm loading out these marimbas, and I could finally get the truck at about, you know, like 2:35, which is a really bad time to be parking a big vehicle in the bus loading zone, and then Ryan Reilch comes out, "What's going on?" And then I'm like, "Oh, I gotta get this out of here." So, then the door swings open as I'm driving down 116-3, then like these things are rolling right, pulling into my own driveway, and tying all down, like once I got out of the way of all the buses. But then, they got there, everybody was safe, and then they, they went to sleep that year. So, yep, nice and dumb, guys.
Great job.
So, I grew up as a percussionist, so I know how hard that is. You guys did a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's awesome. Good. And will you come back and tell us how you did? Solo and Ensemble? Yeah? Okay, we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause it's one of the things you could think, "Well, I can just go up and do that." Yeah, I don't think so.
I, I think I said that in fourth grade and by fifth grade.
Especially that ending, you were really going at it, man, that was really good, really good. Good job, all of you.
Great, thank you. And thank you, parents, for coming tonight.
I'm glad you look like Mrs. Colmes is here. But, uh, she's here.
I want to rest you, rest of your night.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, have fun.
This is where they all sit. Colley, you want me to wrap up?
Pleasure, Dave.
Okay, now that our entire audience left, we can keep going with our meeting. Move on to five, Consent Agenda. Before we start, we will need to remove item E, Partnership Agreement Scoreboard. We will not be voting on that tonight. So, item A is Approval of February Vouchers and Vouchers Payable. B is Approval of January 27th and February 10th, 2020 School Board Minutes. C is Record of School Safety Drills. D is Approval of Personnel Recommendations. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve items five, A, B, C, and D.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
A opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Onto six action items. A is Coaching Advisor Compensation Structure. Can I take a, like, get someone to it first?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Onto B is Best Subatement, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Onto C, Additional Hire, Whittnall Middle School Educator. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, can, just can you go over that again? I mean, it was, it was very descriptive, I enjoyed that, but...
So, last year, if you remember, we brought forward a sixth grade and seventh grade additional one, and we had described in the past how the middle school enrollment had, originally had eight teachers at each grade level, and then based on the size, shrunk down, and based on the new schedule, and the increased enrollment, wanting to, needing to bring that up again due to class sizes. So, last year, we added a sixth grade teacher and a seventh grade teacher again to bring it up. And the question was asked here, should we also be adding an eighth grade teacher? And what we said at the time is, we need to let the sixth and seventh grade teachers be added this year to make sure that we're using them in the way that we need to use them, and decide what specific teacher license we might be looking for at the eighth grade level to replicate that. And so, this is sort of continues from last year's additions to sixth and seventh grade. This is at the eighth grade level. So, we'll be embedding that, those social studies standards with some ELA, and so that's the position that we would post, or we would post for. So, again, when the middle school enrollment got less than it did, we lost through attrition each at those grade levels. And now that we're back up again, both for enrollment and the schedule that we had, it's necessary to add those. So, this just completes the cycle that we started last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Onto seven, Reports. A is All Staff Safety Drill.
Uh, just wanted to share this because we do like to record our safety stuff. I knew everyone was aware that last Monday, we did a, a, an all-staff safety drill, and so just wanted to share a little bit about that. We did not have students present, it was a PD day, and so we used the morning to talk about school safety. So, thanks to the Greenfield Police Department in helping us plan that and put that together. Some of you remember, it's been about two and a half years ago when we did a district-wide evacuation drill, and that was with students, just to be able to look at the timing and the locations, could we fit students in there and all of that. We did not run the safety drill, because it was, it was a lockdown, intruder-type of drill with students, and don't really plan on doing that. There's a lot of debate whether or not we should put students through that, so that is not our plan. However, it's important to be able to have our adults practice that, so all of our staff were here, not just teachers on that day. We went through the protocols, we learned a lot of stuff, you know, whether it was through announcements, what was happening with PA announcements, a lot of those things, what should be said, what shouldn't be said. We ran two drills, I'm sorry, we ran two drills. One at the elementary schools, so both of our elementary schools were there, and then we ran one at the high school, in which middle school teachers were here. Previously, when there was just one drill, all teachers were here, but we know that the protocols you would use with elementary students would be different than you would with secondary students. They would be able to more likely run if that were the situation as an option. That's probably less of an option with elementary students. So, wanted to go through that. What Greenfield Police did after that is, is they took some questions, they also walked through all of the spaces and rooms that any teacher wanted them to say, like, "Here's my room, this is what I did, was that an okay thing, or should've I done something different?" And that provided a little bit of peace of mind to some of the teachers, especially if they had tricky spaces that they weren't quite sure what to do with. So, again, we want to thank them for all of the, the work that they did in providing that, that time. They had four officers in addition to our school resource officers, so five officers that were here, and dedicated that time that was there while we went through those protocols. The second part of that that we did, which is less with the police department, but is with an app, that is an extension of our visitor management app, so if you ever had to check, check in and you use Raptor in providing your driver's license, there's a, of, an app that gets downloaded on, on staff members' phone, and basically, in any situation in which there's an emergency that we need to go through reunification, it downloads all of that information, so we can quickly keep track of where all of the students and adults are, if we need to find any of them, account for them. So, not, in every drill, do we need to account for them. If we have a medical hold, for the, for the most part, we're just keeping people out of the hallways until we can safely clear what's happening there. But in which there is a situation that we need to account for people, it updates every once, every 24 hours, I believe, from our infinite campus, so it's getting that information. So, any new students who are there, or who come, I would get it, I would log in, it says an incident is there, I would be able to see the parent's name, emergency name, medical information I might need to know, so if we're in a situation and a student has asthma or whatever, I'm able to see that. What's important to note is that only when an incident is initiated, does the data come onto my phone, and as soon as that incident is cleared out, all the data goes away. So, that data from a student perspective is not here, although our, because it's on our, from a cellphone standpoint. However, it's the same information that teachers can see in infinite campus now, but people were concerned about, am I storing student data on my personal cellphone? So, that was very helpful to know that. So, we are going to start to use that more for our fire drills, because rather, right now, when our staff go outside, they have to text, like, "All here, or these are the kids that are, are missing." It's not very efficient, because then whoever's collecting those texts, texts have to decide, do we have everybody accounted for? This automatically gives me a class roster, so if I'm in third period right now, it gives me my third period, I check, check, check anybody who's missing, and it gets sent to this massive thing, so then attendance can just see those students or staff that are not accounted for. So, I think that that's, it's a much more efficient way of doing it, and was part of our visitor management system. So, that day allowed us to try a lot of our protocols, get some things solidified on our end, and I think it was, was, was a really good practice in, in part of that. So, our principals will be, this week, we will be doing another drill in, with students, but it's not an emergency, but we need to, like, say we have a lost student. Not that we lose students regularly, but let's say we're trying to find a specific student, right? And so, we want to use this to be able to account for them, and not knowing what the weather will be like, or whatever, we're gonna do just, hey, we need to have a hole, but we're trying to locate a certain student, they're not where they need to be. They could be an eloping student, or whatever the case might be, so that's what we might need to do. We will start then next month using it for fire drills, and that will be outside, and we need to, like, instigate it and then keep track of it. So, that's our plan moving forward. So, we're very pleased with the drill last week, and the, and everything that we went through, and we'll use that to update our crisis plan and a lot of the protocols and everything that we came, came away with that. At that point, not all of our building's staff were able to know how to make a PA announcement, but we realized if there was truly an emergency situation, the office is most likely not going to be the place that's going to make a PA announcement like that. It's going to be somebody who is right near the incident, and so, part of this was enabling all of our staff in all of our buildings to be able to even make that PA announcement. So, simple stuff like that, but just reviewing those protocols, and I think everybody felt a little bit better at the end of that time, like, okay, like, I hope I never have to do it, but if I do, at least I, like, have gone through it at least. And where do we put stuff if I need to quickly access that? Because I may not remember it in a crisis, because your main, mind goes blank at that point, so...
And if I could just add, Todd Iverson is taking the lead on the Raptor app, and getting that all up and ready and doing a lot of the background work, so we appreciate the, the time that's taken to do. And afterwards, right immediately after the event, all staff were able to fill out a survey on the Raptor application, whether they were able to get on, log on, use it the way that it was supposed to be used. So, right now, Todd, along with Todd Stacey, are pouring through about 280 responses to the Raptor app, and whether they were able to use it correctly, and we'll send out kind of a follow-up FAQ to make sure that this app is reaching everybody at 100%, so, thanks, Todd.
So, if this is too much information to put out there, and just say no.
Yep.
Is there a lead, police department? If something were to happen?
Is there a what?
A lead. So, is there a police department that's gonna respond first?
Is there in two municipalities?
Yeah, that's a great question. For the most part, even when we did our evacuation drill, Greenfield will take the lead on that, because they just, their larger department are able to do that, and so we worked, they worked closely with Hales Corners, and you're right, two of our buildings are in Greenfield and two are in Hales Corners, but it's important for us because our, that we have the same protocols within our district, because that would get very challenging. So, when we did the evacuation drill, that was, I mean, that was the established, that they would sort of take the lead on that, on that piece of it, regardless of where that was, so...
Regardless what school it is.
And often, in a true crisis situation, they will bring in as many departments that you can, but, yeah, Greenfield would, would take the lead in all of this.
Franklin would come in, I mean, they said, you probably have...
Eight departments, yeah.
Eight departments coming in at, at that sort of call.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, great, thank you. Onto B, School Board PTO and Liaison Reports.
Uh, yes, so we had our first meet and greet at, excuse me, at our Edgerton PTO meeting. Went well. Couple of questions came out of it from there, not from the meet and greet, but I forwarded them to, to Lisa, and she responded, so that was good. And next month is reorganization, so a lot of, a lot of long-time people are, are moving on, the kids are gone, so hopefully we have a good turnout and get a lot of positions filled.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, they already took my announcement for solo ensemble on the 7th. I'll be working concessions the entire day. And also, remember, 29th is the Falcon, or the Falcon Booster Club, big fundraiser over at Clifford's.
Great, thank you.
Hales Corners meets on the 17th of March. I think Quinn will be there, because we have another candidate meet and greet, and yeah, that's about it, field trips and such coming up.
Yeah, Whittnall Middle School did not have a meeting in February, they are skipping their February and April meetings, and so their next meeting is in March. They did just recently have their Valentine's dance last Friday, and, yeah, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to eight Board Goals. We don't have Continuous Improvement listed on here, because that'll be part of the working session to follow this meeting, but A is Legislative and Advocacy, I is SWSA Report with Quinn.
So, we did a lot of, first of all, thank you all members for signing the letter. We got it off in time, and we got one response, which was really good. Excuse me. We, we, we dealt most of the meeting with all the legislation that was going on, and how are we gonna get our word out there? And then the, the second part of the meeting, we have, as of the last meeting, we have Representative Voss coming to talk to us, or to meet with us in, in March. So, we were just getting our questionings going. We wanna be, we don't wanna be rude, but we need to be forthcoming as well, and hopefully they will be. So, that's a, that's a big thing, that's a big thing for, I mean, the Speaker of the House coming to our group and, and talking to us. So, hopefully, his schedule stays on track, and he can get there, and, and we can ask our questions, and he can give us information. That's gonna be the second Tuesday? Yes, of March. And, and I'm sure there'll be an email coming out if, on these bigger ones that we have, if anybody wants to come, they're more than welcome. Let Lisa or I know, because we'll have to, not reserve a space, but make sure that there's space for you to sit. That's it.
I would say today, in case you didn't see, but Senator Luther Olson decided that he's not seeking reelection, and if you've been following it for a while, he's been a huge advocate for public education. He's a Republican senator from...
Ripon.
The Ripon area, yeah. So, he decided he's not seeking reelection, but he has been a really good advocate for that, and is head of the Education Committee, so that was announced today. So, that'll be a change in whomever takes that, because they will need to find a new chair for that committee, so... So that'll be a change in whomever takes that, because they will need to find a new chair for that committee, so however that gets switched, so.
He's come, he's come to our meeting since I've been there, at least twice, I think I've been there. You know, and I think Terry Phillips, our Executive Director, said it right. You know, he doesn't always agree with us, but he, he's very, he's very transparent. He tells you what his thoughts are and which way, you know, he's going, and he'll, he'll listen. And, yeah, so he's been, been a good lawmaker.
Great. Okay, thank you. Onto nine items for future consideration. Okay, 10 announcements.
We already had the Sol and Ensemble announcement, and the Booster Club announcement. Anybody else, any announcements?
Yeah, well, congratulations to all our sports teams that have everything going on. And then I went to the state swim meet this past weekend, and David Gonzalez was our lone competitor, but he did get under 50 seconds in his 100 free for the first time ever, which is actually a tremendous accomplishment, because it's really difficult to go that fast. So congratulations to him, and then our cheer team took first place, which, what else can we expect?
And what, basketball, and for boys and girls, they'll took the number four seed?
Yep, basketball's got conference crossover for boys on Wednesday, and girls have playoffs on Friday against Greendale, I believe. That's at home at 7:00. Both games are at 7:00. We play, boys' basketball plays Wednesday at Peewakie at 7:00.
And tomorrow night's the Six Traveling Forum, 6:30. No storm. All that crap you heard, it's not happening, so.
You know, that's the only profession, we can be wrong 90% of the time.
Economy, too.
Contract increase, yeah, that's great. Where, where is that?
Right here. 6:30. No, is it here?
Auditorium.
Auditorium.
6:30 auditorium.
Yep, there will be a former victim on there, a survivor, in addition to the panel. Our own school resource officer and FBI agent, Mark Capuches, who is the HR Director at Greenfield, and also a municipal judge in Greendale. A victim nurse, and, trying to think of my fifth person is, oh, the social worker for Greenfield, when they added with their referendum dollars before. So all of that was, that'll be the panel, so I, it will be a really robust, and it's very localized. It's not, I mean, it is in our community, so we will hear, hear about that. So, yeah, if you can attend, please do so.
And I had brought it up at the, at the Edgerton PTO meeting, and a mother said, I'm so proud and so glad that you're doing that. My husband was just on a, a jury duty, and it involved us, and, and people need to be aware. I mean, it, it sounds like it's some foreign thing, but it, it's happening right here. In many different ways.
Okay, any other announcements?
Do you want to tell us about wrestling? No? You don't want to tell us about wrestling?
Would you like to?
I would like you to tell us, it's, you're a little more involved.
Yeah, a little bit more, so, uh, the, no, it's okay. The, um, the wrestling team was the sectional, sorry, regional champion. We took first place in our, our half of the Woodland Conference. We were the regional champion. We faced Arrowhead on Tuesday for the sectional championship. Arrowhead won. They've got a really strong roster. And then we had seven wrestlers qualify for the sectional tournament, which was this past weekend. And we had three wrestlers advance to the state tournament this week. Two are Whitnall, they're both sophomores, and one is a senior at Greendale.
We must wrestle D1, then, if we're playing Arrowhead.
We do. Yep.
When we co-op, you have to combine the schools' enrollments together. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Not too often we play Arrowhead in sports, but we did.
So congratulations to Dylan Paulos and Gavin Kagle from Whitnall, and Luke Laurent from Greenfield. Sorry, Greendale.
Heavyweights?
Yeah.
Really?
The, the senior from Greendale is a heavyweight. Yeah, there's lots of big men dancing on Saturday. It's great.
Nice.
Yeah.
A little sweat on that mat.
A lot of sweat on that mat.
Yeah.
A lot of sweat on that mat. Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else? Okay, on to 11 Meeting Debrief. Hey, we're done before, we're done before 7:00.
27 minutes?
Boom.
Sound correct.
And we had a performance before the meeting started, and after the meeting started.
Now you're just trying to drag it out.
Look at that. I know, I know. Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Let's take a couple of minutes, and then we'll start the working session.